18th, 2024, meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education to order at 7:07 PM. With a reminder to all those watching and participating remotely, to kindly mute your microphones to avoid any background noise. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting, consistent with Connecticut Public Act 22-3. The public may attend in person or electronically via WebEx. This meeting is being recorded, and the recording will be available on the district website. Call the roll. Stephen Lawrence. Sarah Beth Delpreet is not with us this evening. She is remote. Sarah Beth, are you here?
Hi, I'm here.
Thank you. Dr. Jay Dyer is not with us this evening. Lauren Ranchesi.
Present.
Rep Hopkins.
Present.
Jeff Hughes.
Present.
Mike Strandler.
Present.
Erin Williamson. And I'm Lynn Piasik, the chair. Staff in attendance this evening include Ms. Von D'Tenza, Superintendent, Ms. Donna Koonin, Director of Business and Operations. Yeah, I'm looking to see who's here. Ms. Annalisa Sherman, Principal, Mr. James Sapias, Assistant Principal, and Ms. Marcia DeGennaro, Clerk of the Board. Tonight, we are welcoming SCASA Award recipient Yuna Ahmed to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So, Yuna, I'm going to ask if you'll just stand at the podium. We're happy to have you here this evening. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Yuna. And so this evening, we are delighted to recognize our SCASA Award winners, Matthew Messina and Yuna Ahmed, who just led us in the pledge. And I'm going to call upon our Principal and Assistant Principal, Mrs. Sherman and Mr. Sapias, to acknowledge our Award recipients.
So I did not write this statement. It was written by Mr. Erpan Munis, teacher, but I'm very thrilled to be able to share it with all of you. Mr. Erpan writes, "I have had the pleasure of having Yuna as my student this year. She is a dedicated and hard-working student who displays the best version of herself each and every day. Having spent the majority of her life living in a country of Malawi located in southeastern Africa, Yuna brings a unique perspective to our classroom community. In the classroom, she is a role model academically and socially. She also balances being involved heavily in school organizations such as the Beecher Road School Band and TAG. Yuna is also dedicated to giving back to her community in many, many ways. She raises money for organizations such as the Sheldrick Wildlife Trust, the World Wildlife Federation, and Ocean Conservatory. In her own community, she regularly takes part in trash collection runs on local hiking trails with her family." That's amazing. Athletically, she is a gifted soccer player as part of the Interpremier Soccer Club and the local anti-travel teams. Additionally, she is also a talented fencer and plays squash regularly. Always willing to lend a helping hand, Yuna is tremendously well-liked amongst her sixth grade community. Above all, Mr. Erpan says he is most proud of Yuna for being a kind and empathetic person to anyone she comes across. She is destined to succeed in whatever she may pursue in the future." So congratulations, Yuna.
Mr. Catholic, the board chair, will let me speak with the instruction of Mr. Sapias.
Hi, Sean.
You're the seventh.
You're the seventh. You're the only one in person. Do you want to be Yuna?
Oh, no, what if I take the next?
No.
Yeah.
I'm sure. I can say that's absolutely true. Yuna and you on Friday at the SCASA Award.
Lovely. All right, let's do a few. Bob, you need to look at the side. Okay, ready? All right. Good job.
Professional soccer.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We look forward to seeing you Friday at lunch.
We are.
We're glad.
That's it?
We're glad.
It's cold. It's still cold. Thank you so much.
My wife is like, "I just hope."
Without you.
I mean, it's still painful. Thank you for coming. I see you. Thank you.
You are.
Very well.
Good evening. I'm going to be reading Matthew Messina's letter written by his teacher, Jesse Reeves. It is our privilege to nominate Matthew Messina for this year's SCASA Award. It is in his quiet, unseen ways that Matthew exemplifies his integrity in service. With honesty and authenticity that is contagious, Matthew never hesitates to help adults and classmates alike. Matthew has an incredible work ethic. In an earnest quest for excellence, he invests in his tasks set before him to the best of his ability. He is a leader in the school's library squad. He is also a writer for our school's morning news show, BRS News. Matthew's excellence doesn't end in the classroom. Matthew plays golf, enjoys fencing, and competitively participates in archery. He is one of the top archers in his division in the state of Connecticut. As a musician, Matthew participates in the school band and has represented our school in the CMBA Honors Festival. Personifying what it means to hold firm to goals, to do what is right, to serve others, and to always reach for his best, Matthew is an emblem of what it means to deserve the SCASA Award.
And perhaps we can get Matthew to join us at the next meeting in May.
That would be wonderful.
Sounds great.
Congratulations. Just an example of two of the exemplary students that we have at Beecher Road School. Always warms my heart. We're up to correspondence. Sarah Beth sent a remote note that there are several emails that have been placed in Board Book and posted online that were received prior to 4:00 PM today in regard to the placement process for the MAG teacher opening. And I'll move on to public comment. Do we have a public comment sign-up sheet? Anywhere? Oh, thank you. Did anybody sign up for public comment? No, thank you. Okay, is there anyone who wishes to make public comments? Is there anyone online who wishes to make public comments? Please raise your hand in the participants list. I don't see anyone. But I do see that Ms. Worsheding has joined us remotely, so I'll make note of that. We'll move on to the PTO update. A written report from PTO can be found online in Board Book. Thank you for that, Cindy. And I'm going to encourage the public to access the reports because they always are full of great information and activities that go on. Cindy's here with us this evening. Anything that you're going to share and highlight with us would be appreciated.
Where am I pointing this thing? It's true. Okay. So since we're back to our program on a page, and since we were last together, we have completed the book swap until Saturday afternoon. And the book fair right now, it's Family Night Tonight, and it was very busy. It was very free. And it's interesting to see you in the business, too. We have a very busy end of year with Arts Week is next week, Teacher Appreciation Week the year week after that. We'll be kicking off our fun run at the same time as Teacher Appreciation Week. Our classy event, which is well-known for the community, will be after that. And the fun run actually is going to take place during field day. And we'll just have a normal parent volunteers app. There won't be like parents visiting there. The fun run is all online fundraising in honor of your students running the track and the sixth graders graduating. So years flown by.
Wow.
Yeah. So you can see here, book swap, I'm trying to get more pictures of the things we do because I think you pictured it on the board. And it was very, I mean, thousands of books came into this school and went home with our children, and volunteers came in, organized them. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sherman, for your always support for that event and book fair. One thing I'll say is that we've always struggled to get enough books for the upper levels, and I don't know. I was thinking, well, maybe we could ask junior high school families who are kind of aged out or sixth graders as they leave to give us more books for next year. I don't know if people have ideas about that, but that's a struggle every year that we could try to go. And we did a little bit more here. We wanted to get a better handle to be able to share the things that we're funding in school. So you guys have seen this slide before. I did quit author visits back, and I'm giving it a read because we have decided affirmatively that we are not going to do any this year. However, we have identified two authors in the community who are published authors appropriate age group that are going to do visits in the fall. So we're going to look forward to having a lot more planning time on that. And what we did here is, this is a new page, is we organized what we're actually doing in the school. Maybe I'll pair it with pictures at some point, but just for now, I wanted to get a handle on what is the PTO providing the school so that people could see we have something for every grade except for MAG. Oh, we better do something for MAG. And, you know, we think there's some opportunity to do a little bit more in school this year in terms of fundraising. When we fundraise, we fund, and the school then organizes the things that happen in the school, but we do fund these extracurricular activities that occur. So I don't know if anyone has any questions about that. Looks like.
A huge thank you.
Yes. Really. For the partnership, really. We appreciate it.
Thank you. A lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
Greatly appreciated. Cindy, thank you so much, and please share our thanks and appreciation with your board.
I did want to say, I'm sorry, I wanted to say about Teacher Appreciation Week. We are partnering with the Board of Education, of course, to do teacher and staff appreciation. So we're very excited that you are doing a lunch and an ice cream truck, and I think we're going to do a breakfast and a shower that community with flowers event because you guys loved it so much, so hopefully works. And no babies this year, just flowers. We'll do our best for it, and thank you for that partnership.
Thank you again. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have a lot on the consent agenda this month. The minutes from the March 18 regular meeting are included in this evening's consent agenda along with the budget narrative or budget summary, detailed financial reports. The combining financials also included are the following policies for 30-day review: 9,000, the role of board and members, powers, purposes, and duties; 9,005, statement of integrity; 9010, limits of authority; 9020, public statements; 9020.1, advocacy; 9030, commitment to democratic principles in relation to community, staff, and students; 9040, board-related responsibilities; 9110, number of members, terms of office, selection of members; and 9120, officers and auxiliary personnel. Does anyone on the board wish to extract anything from tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda. Stephen, second. Motion made by Stephen Lawrence to accept the consent agenda, seconded by Lauren Ranchesi. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Sarah Beth, are you a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Marcia. Okay, great. Three. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening. I have quite a few bullets of information to share, some of which may overlap with some of the subcommittee reports. So, you know, I want to get to the good stuff, which is our E-Day update and BRS update. But just a few quick things, as you're aware, tomorrow evening is the preliminary budget hearing where the Board of Finance will present the recommended budget, and the community members will have an opportunity to ask questions about the budget priorities. I'm so proud of the fact that Woodbridge values education, and it's evidenced time after time by budget decisions, family, and board support. Once our budget is finalized by the town, the Board of Education will make any needed adjustments, and I'll share all information at the May Board of Education meeting. We continually seek to strengthen partnerships between our school and families and to develop a sense of community in our school. That is one of the Board of Education goals this year, and so the administrative team is trying to identify what communication systems are working well and what parents want to know more about in terms of better communication and in what areas we can improve. So in addition to a recent survey that was conducted, and we are in the process of looking at those results, we are hosting a conversation on April 29 at 6:00, where we will continue discussing these topics in person and get some in-person feedback. Hope that you can join us, and once we have all of that information gathered and analyzed, we will share what we've learned at an upcoming board meeting as well as through a communication to our families and posting some information on our website. It's an ongoing process, and we're already receiving some really good information from the survey. Just touching on the roof and grounds, you're aware that our summer programs have been relocated, wrecked up to Amity High School, summer enrichment and extended school year to Amity Middle School Bethany. And firms have submitted bids for the partial roof replacement, and the town is working on the next steps for vendor selection with that. And we also recently participated in some initial meetings regarding the scope of the grounds work that should help address some of the drainage issues at BRS. And I do want to publicly thank everything that Donna Koonin, our Director of Business Services and Operations, has done to ensure this process is smooth, timely, and well-communicated. This will be a year where Donna wears many hats, and her hard hat, I think, is going to be on the top of the pile. So I'll be right there next to you. Space needs. So, you know, at the same time, we're also looking at space needs. You can see around us that our green team and, you know, even some of our MAG teachers have worked really hard to host and foster our exchange of clothing on Saturday, and space is a premium. So our Board of Selectmen, Dr. Maria Madonik, who used to be on our Board of Education, is working to address the next steps for looking at this work under the guidance of our first selectman, Mika Cardoza. And the timeline for that, it's a very complicated title, Beecher Road School Infrastructure Upgrade Committee, BIUBC. That timeline is under Maria's guidance at this point, and we are getting set to have our first formal meetings, I think, next week. And so I look forward to continuing to update the community, but really at this point, we are gathering a lot of information as a community and, you know, looking at the different companies that have put forward their bids to try to help us brainstorm is one of our first steps. Another celebration is there was a mandatory requirement by the state to conduct an air quality report. We were one of the districts that decided to move forward with it last year, and the board was very supportive of doing this with a little bit of extra funding that we had. Our air quality report is complete. It's a celebration. It's posted on our website along with an executive summary that I wrote for anybody not wanting the very nitty-gritty details. It's long. And Vito Esparo, our Director of Facilities, also created a PowerPoint. We asked Vito to talk to the teachers. CEA has been an advocate of air quality in our schools for our teachers, and we wanted our teachers to know the results. The results are excellent, and I do think that that is an absolute result of Vito's oversight as well as the town and board's support of putting funds into supporting our air quality. So our findings were outstanding, and therefore all to see. Somebody on screen deserves a shout-out. It's Administrative Assistance Today, Administrative Assistance Day-to-day, and I want to publicly thank my administrative assistant, Marcia DeGennaro. We see her every month. We see her ceiling, and sometimes her forehead. She's hiding. Marcia, at least give us a way. There she is. Marcia is exactly this, like she's kind of like under the radar and keeps everything running like seamlessly. So she's kept Central Office running for many, many years and many, many superintendents. I want to say I'm grateful that she stuck around for me. She strives to anticipate any information I have, may need, or questions I'm wondering about, and she usually meets me at my door with piles of information that I didn't even know I needed. She's ready to help me. She brings humor to situations, as evidenced by that cute little wave, and she has a true soft spot that like she might try to hide, but it's impossible to miss. So, you know, we are giving Marcia a shout-out as well as all of our fantastic secretaries and administrative assistants today. We have two more shout-outs. One is that teacher and staff appreciation occurs in early May, so this is our time preemptively to acknowledge that. I did send, you know, a quick note that will go out to the staff, but it's an entire week where we pause and celebrate all of our staff, not just teachers. But it kind of feels like the Oscars because you don't want to leave out the paras or the nurses or their custodians, you know, like everybody. So we do appreciate our staff, and I think it's common that one of the ways we celebrate is food. So I love the fact that the PTO has found some other creative ways as well to celebrate our community. We've also studied gratitude this year and how it can strengthen the team, and we've learned and experienced that practicing gratitude, both giving it and receiving it, helps us recognize the power of somebody's intentions. Gratitude helps us know that we can rely on other people. They will help us, and that feeling fills us when it's received, and it motivates us to give even more. So it's our hope that by honoring and celebrating our staff, they know that we recognize and appreciate all that they do for our district and our children, and that that feeling of gratitude fills their cups and sustains them with motivation and positivity for the rest of the school year. So thank you to our staff. We have a final segue into our E-Day presentation. Shortly, you're going to hear from Director Anthony Taddy and Assistant Director Tim Rourke, and I'm really excited for them to share highlights of their first full year, really, together as E-Day leaders. The program has continued from a strong foundation built from the past and supported by really strong teachers and support staff, but it's notable that it's flourished this year with some new touches, attention to detail, organization, and planning. Tim's dedication and sense of humor and presence really are very helpful to our staff. And when I think of Anthony's leadership style, and you're going to hear from them shortly, but I think of a, you know, he's graceful and he's humble, and I think of a quote attributed to Abraham Lincoln, "Give me six hours to cut down a tree, and I will spend the first four sharpening the axe." Anthony Taddy is a planner, and that planner leads to really, really great results for our community. So we're grateful for their leadership, and I know you're going to enjoy hearing some of what they're going to share about E-Day.
Well, gentlemen, we're delighted to have you here this evening.
I didn't need glasses years ago, but I have to wear glasses on, right? You know? First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for giving me the opportunity to lead the Extended Day program. This is my 34th year at Beecher Road School, and it's been one of the most rewarding and exciting years of my career. Years ago, I had the opportunity to start the Extended Day, and it was awesome to get the opportunity to circle back around and work with Tim this year. I knew there would be lots to learn, a lot of stuff to learn. I knew that. But Mrs. Salnardi, Mr. Hurwitz, and my partner, Tim Rourke, wrote me a 12-page summary of things that I needed to do. I don't think I read everything, but I'm really grateful for all the help that I had. I also would like to thank the entire administrative staff at Beecher Road School who helped us navigate through many situations and helped us guide an amazing program to an outstanding after-school program, in my opinion, one of the best in the era. There have been so much support for all of the things that we've been doing. Mr. Sherman, Mr. Sapias, Mrs. Worsheding, Mrs. Koolen Koonin, Mr. Munis, thank you, and also a shout-out to Marcia for doing so many of the nuts-and-bolds things and keeping us on track on what to do next. A special thanks to Mrs. Tenza, who have been so supportive and helpful to Tim and I. We meet monthly to go over successes and challenges that we might be having. Please just give me an opportunity just to run you through a daily a day, which gives us a lot of information about what we're doing. Our day starts roughly about 1:00. The kids don't come down to look after 3:05. Our signing coordinators, Jill Cola Monaco and Jean Dempsey, come in about 1:00. They start looking through our pro-class system, printing out rosters, printing out daily schedule, looking where the kids are going to recreation. We also have access for them to have the new Pick My Kid app so we can see who's going here. It's just critical to know where all the kids are going. They get down to the cafeteria about 2:45. Basically, everything kind of ready, armed and ready to go. Kindergarten students arrive at about 3:05. In years past, we had a high school student pick them up. This year, Tim and I switched that. We asked the kindergarten team to give us one of the teachers. Mrs. Grabowski walks the kids down. We felt the younger kids need that guidance and support. Students get checked in. Teaching staff arrives about 3:25, and Tim and I then need to dismiss them where they go outside for some physical activity. We also dismiss daily homework. We have lots, very, very well-attended homework class. Mrs. Foley takes them down to Mr. Work's room. Once they finish their homework, then they're dismissed outside. Once about 4:00, 4:10, we call them outside. They're dismissed to their various activities. Our security desk staffed by Lola Johnson and Judy Sova check IDs and radio down to classes when parents pick up their kids. All students come in at about 5:45 in the front hallway to be dismissed. Our amazing nurses, we have two amazing nurses, Mary Jo Olson. She works for the Town of Trumbull, the Christian Heritage School, and Catherine DeRosa, a nurse for a middle school in the Wallenford District, stay with Tim and I. We always have an administrator here at dismissal time in term today. We have a nurse stay with us. God forbid there's some situation. The nurse is here to dismiss the kids. Most of our staff are dismissed, and we finish up. Please allow me to highlight some successes. Reaching out to our community. We did, we ran a class where we made snuffle mats for the local animal shelter, and then the students got on a bus, brought them down, and presented them to the Woodbridge Animal Shelter, and they were amazed. It was just a wonderful, wonderful way of reaching out. We have an amazing staff. Tim and I are just two people, okay? One of the things Tim mentioned was our veteran staff really steps up and working really hard, and our new staff blended together and really, really helped in so many different ways. The morale, like we were talking about, in our staff is phenomenal. Staff is very flexible, and we work through, we developed a new GroupMe app, so all of our staff are on the GroupMe app. No one else can join, but basically, if someone's covered, gets sick during the day, Tim and I have our responsibilities during the day. They can log on and say, "Listen, I'm going home sick. Who can cover my class?" And it's kind of helps us be proactive with this, and it's been running beautifully. We overcame the challenge of not running our cooking class, which was always very, very well-attended. What we brainstorm, we've offered alternative classes. We've increased communication with our parents within the Extended Day program through our pro-class system. Upgraded our new iPhone. Thank you, Anthony, for that. And our Extended Day has a dedicated cell phone line for parents to text and call. So when I get here in the morning, or Tim and I will check that throughout the day. They'll text after school. It's, our iPhone is at the front security desk. We also made an effort to kind of give back to our community school during the school year. We also like, we also made an effort to kind of give back to our school during the school year. We donated a new refrigerator to the nursing staff. We paid to have the kindergarten and north school sandbox filled. We purchased, a nurse was in incredible need of an ice machine. They were using tons of trays, cracking the ice. They were in a tremendous need, so Extended Day purchased a high-quality industrial ice machine that has about 100 pounds of ice in it for every day. We could use it for fielding and a lot of other activities. This year, we decided, Tim and I decided to bring back snacks at Extended Day, which was stopped, I believe, during COVID. We decided to purchase the staff the snacks through the kitchen. Jane Rowdy and I met, and we talked about the snacks. They bring the snacks, I would need about 120. Kids come in, pick a snack, they go in. And then we also kind of elevated it to a new level. Today was very exciting. Today was our first ice cream day. Just amazing. So we brainstormed, would be the best way. We decided to hire one of our staff that works in the kitchen. She manned the ice cream machine. The kids came in, and we've never seen them more excited for the ice cream, by exceptionally well. The arts program, Tim and I decided needed a major overhaul and take a look at what supplies we had, what supplies we needed. That was huge, so teachers could find that. Jean Dempsey, to tie into that, took about 20 hours of looking and organizing items that needed to be saved and items that needed to be discarded. It seemed like we were just saving items from year to year, and some items just needed to be pushed aside, so made room for new items. Some of our staples of our class, every day. We have a physical activity for indoor-outdoor games. Technology is run by Mrs. Charliglio, which is amazing. An arts-based activity, which is off-the-wall this year with Mrs. Gomes and many other people. We developed and implemented many new science activities, science classes. Some were well-attended, some were not. But we blended them in throughout the school year for the kids to have. We also have an incredible, developmentally appropriate kindergarten program, where all of our kindergartners went under the kindergarten playground. They're nurtured by kindergarten staff, and it's really, really amazing. We offered a beautification class, which the kids, just last week, started helping cleaning the blacktop on the north playground, blowing off areas. This week, they worked on mulching the beds outside the north office and making a rainbow out of rocks. Pretty impressive. We also, this year I decided it would be a great idea to serve on the Safety and Security Committee. It's important that we know what the school is doing. And our Extended Day is an extension of the school day. We're doing our best to follow school protocols. We do not want to be on the limb by ourselves. It's important that we follow school protocols. Tim and I practiced our first fire drill in Extended Day, which was awesome. And then we didn't really expect this on the day before vacation, where we lost power, and we had to kind of like make decisions along the way. However, I thought it was a great opportunity to practice a drill that Mrs. Sherman, we were talking about during the Safety and Security Committee, which was an outside threat. So what if the kids are outside and there's a threat? And I said, geez, I just had, maybe it would be better to practice with 120 kids than all our kids in the school. So all our kids were outside, we went outside, explained it. I said, okay, when you hear a three blast on a whistle, you find me and you make it to me in 10 seconds. We practiced, it went very well. I got some great information from Mrs. Sherman. But it was just something that we could do to be proactive, to help, our way of helping out the school in the future. We continue to be 100% inclusive, students with special needs. And there's many times when a student has a one-on-one in school, and we're scraping to also provide a one-on-one for them after school. I think it was today, it was about 10:00, when I was teaching out of the cell gym, and Tim says, hey, did you see so-and-so's coming today? We need a one-on-one. So, okay, so we scrambled, and we got that one-on-one before 3:00. On Saturday, April 27, Tim and I are going to be running another way of getting out of the community, running a cornball tournament. I'm going to be at the Woodbridge Earth Day. I'm going to be in in the morning, Tim's going to be in in the afternoon. Lastly, this year, Extended Day team, not one person. Our entire staff took a great program and elevated it to a well-organized program, where students are safe and engaged in meaningful after-school programs. We're not done yet. Every day, we're trying to tweak our program and adjust to better serve the students of Woodbridge. Our motto at Beecher Road School has always been, make our decision on what's best for the student. Tim and I follow that motto. What's best for our student after school, students after school. I want to thank you for the opportunity for Tim and I to come before the board, and we look forward to coming in the future.
Anthony, thank you.
You're welcome.
Tim, thank you for your time. I see amazing things happening in Extended Day. So I appreciate all that the two of you have done. I don't know if any board members have any questions of Anthony or Tim?
Awesome to see the program up and running, especially post-COVID, with all that stuff that happened, so you can see it up and running again, and we'll be doing so.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beecher Road School update, Ms. Sherman.
Hi, everybody. So I know Vonda did this, but I also want to take a minute to do a special shout out to my administrative assistants. We have some really wonderful ones that work with us here at the Church. Laura Abbott, Lola Johnson, Rosemarie Castrangelo, Judy Silva, and of course, Marcia, are all amazing, dedicated professionals. We're really, really lucky to have them working with us in the community, and every single one of us benefits from the work that they give daily. So a big shout out and a thank you to all of them. I wanted to give a quick update on kindergarten. Usually, at this time of the year, we start looking really closely at our numbers, and we start tracking how we're doing. We've been looking all along, but we start really examining them. So as you know, the state did recently change the age requirements for incoming kindergarten students. So the cutoff age used to be January 1, and now it's September 1 for being five years old. But they did also allow parents the opportunity to wave their children into kindergarten pending an assessment by the school district. So we already administered one of those assessments with several of our staff members, and it went really, really well, because of the support of all those amazing staff members. And all of those students were admitted into our kindergarten class. So we currently have about 75 students registered. We are pretty confident that our numbers will rise. We're a little lower than we were last year at this point, but I told Laura, that, who is the only kindergarten registration this year, that the numbers always, springtime into the beginning of summer, parents start registering centrally. So on May 7, I will say we are hosting our kindergarten orientation, which is an opportunity for registered incoming kindergarten students to visit. And the parents get a little orientation from me, and they get to meet kindergarten teachers, the teachers get to go into the classrooms, and it's a really nice opportunity for sort of a first foray into Beecher Road School. So anyone out there listening, if you have not registered your kindergarten child, please do so, so that we can get you in for orientation on May 7. And our pre-K numbers for next year, in our threes class, we have nine students currently, with four more that are potentially joining us. And in our four-year-old class, we have nine students total so far. Those numbers are also flexible. I'm also really excited to share with you that our literacy work is ongoing. Our program review committee met and reviewed many, many resources. And after extensive review, they narrowed the choices down, and we are currently piloting one resource. And I have to give, Malika's here with us, but I have to give her and our literacy team, Jen Nicole and Theresa McUzi, big, big, big kudos, because they have been working hours, I don't, I can't even, I can't even compute how many hours they have spent on this process. It is beyond the work that they already do. They have been spending just gobs and gobs and gobs of time on this process. They actually met with kindergarten for second and third grade teachers, and our Mag Year One and Mag Year Two teachers in order to talk through this pilot, unpack the resource that we are piloting, and make sure that the teachers are successful in their piloting. So grade three teachers started this week. Grades K 1 and 2 and Mag 1 and 2 will be starting next week with the pilot. And we have some follow-up visits and conversations to happen as we continue on through this journey. I'll, of course, have more to share with all the board members next month, as we continue. We also have begun our hiring process. We are so excited that we're doing it very proactively this year and much earlier than we typically do. So the positions that we currently have screening committees for are our multi-age position, a grade-level classroom future position, and a literacy specialist position. Our screening committees are comprised of staff members from different areas and departments in the building to give us a nice cohesive representation of our Beecher Road School community. They are comprised of two teachers, a specialist, a special education teacher, and an administrator. And that's the round one screening committee. The round two screening committee looks a little bit different and includes administration and potentially other staff as well. So we are in the middle of that process for all of those positions, either reviewing applications or already conducting interviews or beginning interviews, again, with that screening committee. And the last thing I want to say is that I have to give a really big thank you to our amazing Student Council and our teachers and our students from Student Council. They help to organize Spirit Week right before break and their annual coins for a cause. I can't wait to hear how much money they collected and where it's going. It's always a wonderful organization. I have to say that two of my favorite days were the Dress Like a Teacher Day, and the teachers flipped it and dressed like a stupid. I carried around a Stanley cup all day, and I got to tell you, I felt like I was lifting weights all day long. Because anything's anything, fill it up. I actually went like to all the sister classrooms to be like, I'm going to carry this thing all day. And I also love the creativity of the kiddos. Unicorn Day, which I celebrate, of course, coincided with Anything But a Backpack Day. So we had beautiful unicorns carrying in things like hokey boards and shopping carts and coolers and lots of different objects that were not backpacks. So many thanks to our Student Council, because Spirit Week is always a super fun week.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Lisa, anyone have any questions of Lisa? Great things. Thanks, Lisa. And Board, I did not ask on Vonda's report if anyone have any questions for her.
Sorry, so everybody's wondering.
You forgot to ask.
What did I say?
What did you say?
What did I say?
Okay. The one, the way to come back to school, this is also a very.
Right, right? Sofa, crazy hair, sofa.
Yeah, yeah, come back to school is right, yeah. Okay, Town Building Committee with whatever the new letters are.
B-A-U-P-C.
Mr. Hughes, do you want to say anything?
I don't think any additional add from what Vonda mentioned earlier. Maybe except that the committee's expanding, eight, three new members, so.
Four new members.
Four new members, thank you. So four new members.
Four new members will be. I believe the Board of Selectmen is meeting tomorrow night prior to the preliminary budget hearing to vote on those board members.
Good news.
If you haven't heard that, that's the news I got. Donna, do you have anything that you wanted to add about the Building Committee? Like, I know that the roof.
Yeah, bids came in and.
That's right.
And the low bidder was Soctown. And we have a scope review tomorrow scheduled with Silver Pettercelli and Soctown to talk a little more specifics about the project. So, yeah, we don't, if we have a contract, that's challenged and signed, I don't make a contract, but we're on our way.
Great. And as always, Donna and Vonda have been on top of the building project and working proactively for, to make it all become a reality and for the summer programs to be sent elsewhere and located elsewhere for the summer, which is wonderful. So thanks for that. Curriculum Committee report, Mike.
Okay, so we met on April 4 at Fort M. We covered two main topics. One is the ALA update that Ms. Sherman also just updated us on. As a reminder, we had submitted a plan for Right to Read that was rejected, and we had to review a number of other programs, and that's what Ms. Sherman was describing. Today, I was, I was pleased to see that they went through, the committee went through a, went through the provided programs with a root brick. So it was a very kind of systematic process for evaluating what kinds of programs that were provided from the state might be a good fit for us. As Ms. Sherman mentioned, it landed on one, HMH. And we're in the process of testing that out now. The idea is to get feedback from these teachers and then to assess whether this is, this actually is going to be as good of a fit for our school as anticipated. And if it's not, then go return to the list and go through that process again. So the goal is for full integration in the 2025, 2025, 2026 year, right? So that's the update on the Right to Read. We also got an update on the Master Class that Beecher participated in. So the Master Class is a statewide professional learning experience that three literacy specialists participated in along with Principal Ms. Sherman, Special Services Director, and Superintendent. So in the process of wrapping that up now, or maybe it's already. Okay, still have more to go.
A few more sessions and a big Ignite presentation that we have to do.
Yes, so excited to hear about that. And yeah, so that's wrapping up at the end of this school year. So that consisted of five full-day sessions, five virtual, six-hour follow-up sessions is what our staff members have committed to that. And then, so the last thing that we had a brief update on was continued development and focus on our strategic plan. We're continuing to work with Dr. Rafferty and Ross Cooper around professional development experiences that will help us apply some of what has already been developed for that. That's the update. And our next meeting is, I think this is very, this is this morning here?
We do, we have one. Pretty sure.
We did? That tells June.
June 6 will be our next curriculum committee meeting.
Yeah. Thanks, Mike. Anyone have any questions for Mike?
You know, my only question is regarding the Right to Read potential curriculum. Do you have an idea of what that will cost?
So we do have some ballpark numbers. We also have, if you remember, we have grant funds, some grant funds that we can apply towards that. So again, it comes into play with, based on which program we pick, how much do we, as a team, think we can implement next year? That's why full implementation isn't until the following year, because it could be that we pick certain grade levels or full. You know, it really depends. We have about $250,000 worth of grant money. So we have a nice chunk of it, for at least the first year to be covered.
And so from what I understand from our conversation, that this is, that this curriculum is not the most pricey. It's not the cheapest. It seemed to generally fall somewhere in the middle of the price range, right?
There are consumables, right, that would.
Yes. So that's.
There are. So that would be an ongoing cost.
An ongoing cost that once the grant funds are.
It would be.
Yeah.
Right. It could be a drop in paper costs.
Right, something else could.
Right, we talked about that.
Less copy and for teachers.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else have any questions? Finance Committee.
All right, perfect segue.
Yes, from money to money.
Exactly. And I hope Donna was here saying, good job. To thank you, as always, to Donna, for, you know, really just being so on top of. To thank you, as always, to Donna, for, you know, really just being so on top of our finances and what's happening. We're three quarters of the way through the year, got three months left. So overall, our projected savings across all categories are estimated currently at $250,000, which is down a bit from the prior month. We'll talk through. On the lower expense side of the ledger, a hundred series salary savings, we have approximately $157,000 estimated currently, which is up from $133,000 last month. And really, this is reflecting the fact that as the school year is ending, it's becoming less likely that we're going to fill certain open positions. So Donna is making adjustments over time as a result. So these estimates, estimates will continue to be revised as, as we near the end of, of the current fiscal year. Two hundred series benefits are currently on track, but we're also now estimating a surplus of $89,000. So insurance costs have been consistent with what's budgeted, but SEEMERS, the Connecticut Municipal Employees Retirement System, have come in less than budgeted, so that continues to be positive. Three hundred series professional services, we have an $81,000 savings, and that's basically consistent with the prior month. For with four hundred series purchased property services, we're currently projecting savings of about $87,000, which is up from the prior month. This is due to the milder winter and the fact that the pool has been empty and has not had to be heated for six months. Although this is something that Donna said she, in, in her free time, she's going to investigate for to sort of fully understand the savings. But hey, happy to see the savings. Seven hundred series, eight hundred series, nine hundred series furniture and equipment, dues and fees, miscellaneous, miscellaneous expenses, all on track. We expect to fully spend those funds, but not go over. On the higher expense side of the ledger, the five hundred series other purchase services, we're now estimating a budget that will, will come in high about $153,000 over budget. We were already estimating tuition for two, that were unbudgeted for two outplaced students, plus transportation expenses. And Donna, looking at the numbers, has increased the estimate for one of those outplaced tuitions by another $45,000. Get additional information, this is what happens. Material and supplies is also, we were showing that on budget, and now we're showing we're going to be about $11,000 over. However, it's for a good reason. Given the fact that we have potentially such a large surplus, the, the district has gone ahead to buy some additional, some new emergency lighting and some additional motors and other parts to be used for ongoing maintenance, which if you're going to go over budget, that seems like a good reason why to do it. That said, Superintendent Tenzel has shared a list of potential ways we may want to ultimately think about expanding some of that budget surplus in this year. Of course, we want to wait to have that discussion until we have our final budget from the town. So yeah, that's it. Any, any questions?
Thank you very much for your report. Policy committee.
We met on April first. We continue to review the nine thousand series. I will remind everyone that CAPE is also helping us review this, so we're kind of bringing, bringing our policies up to date. Many of the policies came back from CAPE with no changes, so I'm really only going to tell you about the ones that there's some changes, so you understand what the changes are. In policy nine zero zero five, we found that one of the bullets was duplicated. So we're removing the duplication bullet. Under nine zeros one one, we realized that how it was worded was that it couldn't have been interpreted that Vonda was responsible for evaluating herself, all of the staff. So we just wanted to clarify that the responsibility was that she supervises that all, the evaluation of all of the staff. Then the next one is nine zero one two. Nine zero one two, and so therefore, which I'm not sure if that's in the packet, but just so you know, number four was modified to add the word amend after the word consider and before and. Again, since BRS is owned by the town and the WBOE does not control the building, we deleted something that implied that we might have more control over the building than we actually do. We just wanted to make that clear. And, and we suggested reordering some of the items. Number nine zero two two zero. That one was, oh, it was just honestly a very, we just wanted to make sure, again, this is more clarification, that we, the information we share from the board meetings, that we disseminate the information as needed, that not, we didn't want to give people the expectation that every single thing about every single meeting was disseminated. Nine zero two zero point one, this was clearly a, a bylaw that was important to CAPE, because it talks about advocacy. And while I appreciate the importance, I am a huge proponent of advocacy. We believe that CAPE, of course, of all shouldn't be called out. There's many ways to engage in advocacy, and we didn't think it needed all the detailed ways in which they felt that we should be advocating. And so we left our ability to advocate just a little broader. Again, we're still committed to advocacy, this is, I have to mention our commitment. It just allows us to be broader in our thinking and less prescriptive. And then nine zero three zero, there was really just a spelling error that was correct. And that is it.
Thank you. Any questions? The policy committee has been like knocking it out of ballpark.
Credit to Vonda.
Great, great work and, and necessary work in reviewing each policy, which hasn't been done in a long time. CAPE liaison report. Sarah Beth, do you have anything?
Hi, just quickly, two things. There is a survey in your email. CAPE, apparently occasionally will do a member survey, and you, if you complete it, you could be entered into an $100 drawing. On May fifteenth, there is going to be a legislative wrap-up that will discuss what was passed during the last legislative session. So updates on new laws, regulations, and how districts will need to act, you know, based on these decisions that were passed. So that might be something of interest.
Great.
That's all.
Thank you. All right, we're up to new business. Which you'll see that there's nothing on the agenda, but I would like to propose that we add to the agenda. So somebody help me and tell me it, a discussion in action on. Insurance benefits? Tell me what you would like me to say, and I'll say. Hold on. And Marsha, we'll try to say it slowly so you can get this, because this is an addition based on our. Can you read this one? Okay, yes. All right, so first, I would like to make a motion to add action on. Insurance negotiations to the agenda. Do I have a second to that motion? Second, like Brooke Hopkins. So Marsha, I'm going to repeat it for you. Linky has made a motion to add action to the agenda on insurance negotiations under new business. Brooke Hopkins seconded that. So we need a two thirds.
You're adding that under new business, correct?
Yes. So we need a two-thirds vote to add that to the agenda. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Sarah Beth, are you a yes?
Yes.
Okay, Marsha, that's unanimous. Are you set with that, Marsha?
Yes, that's mine.
Okay, great. All right, now I'm going to make a motion to approve the renewals with Connecticut Care for Medical. Move the dental and vision to Delta Dental slash Delta Vision. And remain with Anthem for Retiree Over Sixty-Five Medical. Do I have a second to that motion? Stephen. Any discussion on that motion?
I think it's important to just say that from our understanding, that the dental, the movement of the dental will result in an improved plan for, for everybody who is covered, like significantly.
Yes, significantly improved plan.
So I think that's just important to, to note that publicly.
Right. Connecticut Care is currently the medical plan that school employees have. Dental would be a new one, and yes, thank you for pointing that up. Anything else that you think we need to add? Okay, any other questions or comments, discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Sarah Beth, are you a yes?
Should I vote on this, since I wasn't part of the previous?
You can abstain if you want.
I, I'll abstain.
Okay. So Marsha, do you have that, that it's unanimous, except for an extension by Sarah Beth Elfree?
Yes.
Okay. And also Donna has a copy of that motion. Perfect. Thank you, board members. Okay, so we're up to the Board Chair's monthly community service announcement. So I just have to jump on the bandwagon to mention that today is designated as Administrative Professionals Day, as it has been pointed out by so many. And so I too would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the amazing administrative assistants that work at Beecher Road School. We are so lucky to have such warm, caring, and efficient individuals who work staffing art offices. As a teacher, I learned quickly what an important role the office staff played in the daily lives of the students and the teachers in the building. And as a board member, I've realized what an important role the office staff plays in just the basic functioning of the school on a daily basis. For all that these wonderful individuals do, please accept the board's heartfelt appreciation. And a special shout out to our own Marsha DiGennaro, who not only serves as Vonda's administrative assistant, but serves as the board's clerk with such efficiency. And we thank you so much, Marsha. On the next note, Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week will be celebrated at Beecher the week of May sixth. And so I would also like to take this moment to acknowledge our outstanding teachers and staff. The Woodbridge Board of Education values the work that is done every day for the students of Woodbridge. We recognize the contributions made by these highly talented and creative professionals. The teachers and staff of Beecher Road School serve as a positive role model for all of our students, and they are dedicated to enriching the lives of our young learners. And for this, we are extremely thankful and grateful. And so I would ask the board to join me in giving both our administrative professionals and everyone, staff and teachers who work at Beecher Road School, big round of applause. You are Beecher, so there's nothing else that really can be said. I'd like to remind people who have their calendars out that the town's preliminary budget hearing, as Vonda mentioned, is scheduled for tomorrow night, Thursday, April twenty-fifth. It will be held in the Center Gym. The Facilities Committee will meet Thursday, May second, at seven thirty a.m. Finance Committee will meet, we changed the date on that to Tuesday, May seventh, at four thirty p.m.
Yes.
Same time, okay. So Finance Committee, would you make note that the May fourteenth meeting has been changed to May seventh? And the annual town meeting will be held on Monday, May twentieth, at Amity High School. So therefore, our next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-first, and I believe it's at seven o'clock p.m. Okay. We're up to number five, public comment. Is there any public comment? Anyone in? Participating remotely, please raise your hand in the participants list. I don't see anyone. And so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn at eight thirteen p.m. Brooke Hopkins? Second, Jeff Hughes. Motion to adjourn made by Brooke Hopkins, seconded by Jeff Hughes, eight thirteen p.m. Please raise your hand. All those in favor? Sarah Beth, I assume you're in favor?
Yes.
Great, that's unanimous. Marsha, thank you ever so much. Have a great.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.